Roll call of the members, Councilor Arigo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Novoselski. Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the meeting held on January 28th, 2013.
All in favor, all opposed, vote as ordered.
Resolution of condolence will be read in memory of Karen Bellinger, parking control officer.
You want to read it first, and then we'll vote on it, and then we'll do a small amount of silence.
Resolution of condolence. Whereas parking control officer Karen Bellinger has rendered conspicuous, faithful, and honorable public service to the citizens of the city of Revere, and whereas Almighty God in His infinite wisdom has called parking control officer Karen Bellinger to her eternal reward, and whereas the sad calling from amidst of parking control officer Karen Bellinger leaves a vacancy in the official family of the city of Revere that will be difficult to fill, and a memory that will long be cherished, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Revere City Council extend to the family of parking control officer Karen Bellinger on behalf of the citizens of Revere our heartfelt sympathy and sincere regrets on their profound loss, and be it further resolved that in recognition of Karen's service to the citizens of the city of Revere that the city council pays sincere tribute to her memory by spreading upon the official records of the Revere City Council a copy of this resolution of condolence. This is ordered by the city council, Councilors Arigo, Correggio, Janino, Guanasso, Haas, Patch, Penta, Powers, Riordan, Zambudo, and City Council President Novoselski voting in the affirmative.
We have a suspension of rules on a late communication from the mayor on the recent flooding and storm damage.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council. I just wanted to come here, obviously, because, you know, we've all been through this storm since midday Friday. We've been trying the best we can to give the residents of the city updates via Facebook, Twitter, city's website, and obviously Revere TV. The most recent one was this afternoon at 12:30 where we gave an update, and presumably that will continue to run periodically until we get cleaned up. So essentially why I'm here is just to basically, particularly for those councilors that weren't able to make it up here this afternoon on short notice, if there was any questions that they may have or comments that they have, I'd like to, you know, be able to field those now. Earlier today I had all members, almost, like pretty much all members of our emergency management team with us, but with me now is DPW Superintendent Don Goodwin and Fire Chief Gene Dougherty for any questions that any councilors may have from them. We have been trying to put as much information out as we possibly can with respect to, you know, how the residents can work with the city so that we can, you know, make sure that we can remove and move as much snow as we possibly can so people, particularly children, when they go back to school, will be able to get there safely. My understanding is now school will be canceled tomorrow. That's my understanding right now, and because the superintendent just doesn't feel that the sidewalks and bus stop areas are ready and safe enough for the kids to get to school, so unless heard otherwise, school will be canceled. Beyond that, if there's any questions or comments that councilors have, we're here. So either for myself or Superintendent Goodwin, as I say, or Chief Dougherty.
Councilor Correggio. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, thank you for coming before us. Basically, I just have questions basically about equipment-wise, fire apparatus and also public works equipment, the condition of the equipment, how do they stand up during the storm? Is there anything that may be needed in the future? Any trucks that might have broken down? What do we have online? And the other thing is, is are we ready for another storm? In case we have another storm, do we have equipment up to par to be able to perform a task like this again?
That's a good question. We, you know, as you know, this was a major storm. It was one of the top five or six storms ever to hit our area. So the city is not overly abundant with heavy equipment, so a lot of the snow plowing that we had to do was reliant upon local contractors, many of which just had pickup trucks. For most storms, that is sufficient, and we're able to get the roads cleared and safer travel. Unfortunately, this was the type of storm that really taxed most of that equipment. In fact, we lost four or five pieces of equipment during the heaviest point of the storm. One actually caught fire, and four others had other mechanical failures that took them out of service, so, you know, it did present some problems to the overall operation. Are we ready for the next storm? I'd like to think that we are. These problems that we experienced during this storm, fortunately, the storm ended, and now we're in the cleanup effort, and those particular pieces that were out of service, I am very hopeful and confident that they'll be back in service the next time that we're supposed to be hit with any type of a storm. But this was the type of storm that really taxed all equipment, whether it's heavy equipment or otherwise, to the maximum because of the weight and abundance of the snow that we had, so... But I feel as though we'll be prepared for the next storm.
My last question would be roughly how much of a cost to the taxpayers this particular storm?
So far, our best estimates are somewhere around $150,000 to $200,000. As you know, we can deficit spend that, so that's not something that will have to come out of this year's budget, but we're going into next year $200,000 to the negative. So obviously, any break we can get in the weather between now and the official onset of spring is going to be appreciated, so...
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you and the mayor. I'm sure everybody realizes it's a very costly storm, and, you know, you were actually there when I was down there at Short Beach with Congress Amaki showed up. He toured Winter Beach and the whole shoreline, and hopefully with the governor declaring this state of emergency, maybe we can get some federal money. At least he indicated he's going to do everything he can, so, you know, maybe pay three quarters of it, which should be, you know, that'd be good news to the taxpayers. But I do want to, you know, I was out there quite a bit Friday night with one of the toe-tucked, I mean, the plow drivers, and Saturday with the plow driver and superintendent quite a bit when he was in my area, you know, drove around. And, you know, from everybody, the workers down in the city, I mean, you can't say enough. These guys work 40, 50 hours, and just, they just keep going. I mean, I don't know how many phone calls he took, you know, the hours I was with them. It's every 10 seconds here, they're moving people around, equipment around. I've seen you with the fire chief, all over the city, mayor, all over my ward. I thank you for that. But National Grid also. I've lost a lot of power down in my area, up in the hills, even the lower point. They were out there 7 o'clock in the morning, and people got restored a lot earlier than a lot of other people, which I was glad. The electrical inspector, Michael Conley, was there the night before, called him, he called National Grid. You know, they responded to him, with the chief also. But all in all, I mean, I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly, and the excellence of people that really do the right thing. It's the one or two people that donate heed to the warnings that you give about staying off the road, you know, throwing the snow in the street. I mean, I've seen streets cleared an hour later. It's like, jeez, this thing looked 10 times better an hour ago. And it's when people, they don't realize it's just going back into their driveways and, you know, if they pile it up higher. And that's one of the pet things that I've seen actually coming up in the Immaculate Area this was, and it's all the corners, but people that have private contractors do their plowing the snow, and this is a lot of snow. But they have to be, they've got to be a little sensitive to the people living in the street, people exiting the streets. I see snow piled 30, 40 feet near. You can't see it until you're already out in the street. And there's got to be some ordinances and just, you know, putting a lot of time into this storm, seeing it firsthand and seeing what the negatives are and the positives are and everything else, and it just goes a long way. One car can just devastate a whole area. Plow gets stuck, you know, go and you have to stop, and they get stuck, and like you said, I heard Oak Island area had one truck get on fire and break down everything else. But maybe, you know, these, we can learn from this and sit down with the DPW Chair Committee and put some ordinances together to try to tighten up the little negatives and stuff. But I do want to commend the residents. I've seen residents helping residents, you know, 99% of them doing the right thing, so I do want to commend them. I want to commend you and your team. I've seen them out there. I mean, bumped into you probably 10 times just on Saturday. Fire chief and police chief, his team, I mean, it was just a team effort. And I think with, you needed a team effort with this storm, and it's still not over yet. I talked to Donnie, I said, now the school can't open them yet. I mean, this is a major storm. I mean, sidewalks, I don't know how they're going to get done, but that's for another day. Hopefully this rain puts a dent into it, and like you said, hopefully it doesn't snow, and God is with us on that. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, if I could just say, just to, because you mentioned a couple of things that I just wanted to reiterate, and first off, thank you for the compliment. You know, the guys really, everybody out there, our DPW crew, our other emergency management, you know, public safety officials, fire, police, other private contractors, I mean, a lot of these people were working on zero sleep, or some, you know, maybe got a couple hours in here or there. But it is frustrating when you have people that, you know, we do our best to go and open up the roads to make them safe for travel, and then you've got people blowing the snow and shoveling the snow back into the middle of the street. I mean, first off, it's illegal, but second off, as a practical matter, what are they doing for their neighbors? I mean, they're putting their snow back in the street, making it impassable for everybody at that point. So, you know, this was a difficult storm, and 99% of the people really adhered. I mean, we tried to put out as much information as we could, and you're 100% right. There was a lot of neighbors helping neighbors, people, you know, we asked for people to check in on, you know, people who may be disabled or senior citizens, and people were great doing that. And really, you know, it made this storm much, much easier, much, much easier with the patience that our residents actually had in letting us do our job. So thank you for recognizing that, Councilor.
You're welcome. Councilor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you and the mayor. First of all, a couple of observations. This was a storm of truly epic proportions, whether you believe it or not. I know we've had more, a few more inches of snow in other storms, but I don't think we've ever had one that deposited 30 inches of snow in less than 24 hours. That was a, that made a huge difference in all of this because obviously you can't get rid of it as it's coming down if it comes down in that shorter period of time. So I do want to congratulate the administration, and Donnie, and the chief, and all the parties that were involved in removing the snow, and most importantly, getting at least the roadways. And I'm speaking mostly of Ward 4, obviously. I was able to transfer so Ward 4 at approximately 4 o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday without getting stuck anywhere. I mean, if fire equipment had to come up the street, or an ambulance had to come up the streets, even on these very steep hills we have in Ward 4, I'm confident they could have if they hadn't done so anyway. The other thing I would like to observe is I spent the early part of my day up in Salem, which is a bigger town, probably has a lot more resources than we have, and believe me, things are no better up there than they are here today. So we're all in this boat together. It's kind of like when you get hit with a tidal wave, there's nothing much you can do to stop the tidal wave. It's going to hit you, and it's what you do in the aftermath and how you deal with it. And I think we're doing as good as we can expect to do under the circumstances. I would make one comment about the, and it was a great idea, to utilize the new garage down on Revere Beach, which obviously, because of the fact that there were no commuters, because the roads were shut down, the governor urged everybody to stay at home, was underutilized by the general population that was designed to use it, but, and therefore available to people in our city to use. And I hope, and I think for the next time we're hit with an emergency such as this, we ought to really think about getting people to cooperate by moving their cars there because, let's face it, and I know, I know the superintendent would agree with me, that the biggest problem is dealing with cars that are in the way of the equipment trying to clean the streets. And really, we, I think we need to be able to plan a little bit better to assist people in getting to the garage and back and forth from the garage, and finding a way, particularly in the really narrow streets and the narrow areas, and I would suggest that Ward 1 up in Beauchamp, certainly Ward 4 and Ward 2 are some of the really potential problems. And if we can get, jeez, even half those cars put away for 24 or 48 hours, I bet it'd be a lot easier to clean these streets and make things safe for everybody. But again, under the circumstances, I think everybody did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. You know, that point is extremely well taken. That parking garage was a godsend, and we should encourage, and maybe if we can, work it out with the MBTA quicker. I mean, we didn't really think about it until the storm was right on us, so next time around, we should, if we know there's going to be a major storm, maybe work with them again to do the same thing and encourage more people to go up. That being said, we were very fortunate, only 12, I'm sorry, 19 vehicles had to be towed during this whole storm, which is, you know, phenomenal, which means most people complied with the parking ban. And by the way, of those 19, only 12 were Revere residents. The other seven were from out of town, so people really did adhere to that parking ban extremely well. And as far as your ward, Councilor, I mean, there's probably no other council, maybe Councilor Penta, that, you know, has more hills involved, so, you know, it really, as you know, it's very, very hard with that much snow and that shorter period of time to keep them clean, and I think that's a tribute to our DPW and our, and, you know, those subcontractors oftentimes that get abused, you know, on a regular basis when they're out there for doing such a good job, you know, being able to keep up with it to the extent they could. I mean, there's only so many places that you can't, there's so much snow, you can't, it has to go somewhere, so you're going to see a lot of snow still up. But really, for the most part, roads are passable, and, you know, I think that, you know, I think, you know, and I share the sentiments of the councilors that have spoken so far, that everybody did a great job moving that snow around, so... Any other questions?
Yes, Councilor Guanasso. Just to be brief, I was privileged to be there this afternoon and applauded you and your staff and obviously the police, fire, DPW. But more importantly, as was mentioned by other councilors, the residents of our community really did a yeoman's job in terms of preparing for this storm, getting, taking care of all the necessary things they have to do, and being neighborly. I witnessed on my street an individual who helped out two neighbors because he had a snow blower. A beautiful thing that is, when you see somebody that can't go out there and care for themselves, and you see a neighbor jump to their rescue right away, without even a question of a doubt, and that was done throughout a lot of other streets too, and that is amazing about our community. And I know people in Linfield, and I know people in Wellesley and stuff, and they can't say that. Mayor, they cannot say that. The people of Revere have big hearts, and my kids are going to kill me because I mentioned Linfield, but it's a, it's a, it's a truth. It's the way it is. The people of Revere are generally good people, and they're willing to help their neighbors, and they're not afraid to extend themselves, and that's a plus to everybody who lives here. And of course, it helps us all too in the process, so congratulations, good job.
You're 100% right. I mean, I've always said our greatest asset that the city has was its people, and we do, we have great people in this city, and, you know, you really don't, well, I see it every day, but they really have a chance to demonstrate it in an event such as this. You know, when, when things get very, very tough, that's when you see the good in all our people, so thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Councilor Powers. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, I certainly want to commend yourself, Fire Chief Bean Dougherty, Superintendent Goodwin, and the other officials that were involved, and particularly the employees down at the DPW for the great job they did under very difficult circumstances. I know that one of the things that I would probably like to have looked at, and looked at in the future, would be to maybe areas like, I think the garage opening that was a wonderful idea, but I think there are other areas like the Beauchamp School parking lot, the Garfield School parking lot, the high school parking lot, where if we could use those, utilize those areas even for a day or two with a storm of the size we just had, that it would be more convenient for the residents that live in those areas, and it would be a lot easier if we could get more cars off the street to go curb to curb with our plowing. I know a lot of residents experienced frustrations with, when they would leave an opening into their home, and then we would go back down with the plow. But people have to keep in mind that our first priority in this city is public safety, being able to get fire apparatus, ambulances, and police vehicles when necessary to the residents in this city. So if someone had to go back out and reopen, so be it, but the important thing was that we had those plows available under very difficult circumstances to get down those streets and clean those streets. Were there some glitches? Sure, there were, but I think by and far, everyone did an excellent job. I saw residents out there in my area that were actually cleaning off fire hydrants and making them visible and accessible in the eventuality of a fire down in those areas. By and far, Mr. Mayor, I want to compliment you, I want to compliment the people at the DPW and our department heads that were involved for doing what I think was a great job under difficult circumstances. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Appreciate it.
Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming. I was with you this afternoon, and I threw plenty of bouquets at you and your team, but I, you know, some of us who've seen your administration for the last year come to expect this type of professionalism. I think everybody was, acted professionally, your emergency management team, the DPW. I saw some of the guys that I knew were out there for 30 hours straight, and they were just working away and, you know, pleasant and no complaints and nothing, they're just doing their job and knew that they had to keep up with this storm because once you, once you take a break in a storm like that, you're dead, you lose every, you lose everything. The one thing that really struck me is, you know, I've been, I've been a councilor for quite a while here. I can't remember the last time when I had people calling my house to compliment the city on its, on its snow removal. So that's a first for me, and the only one thing I might say is that if we do know of another big storm coming and the garage, perhaps we can work it out that we can have certain times and shuttle people back to their houses. I know that's, sounds like a big task, but I mean, it would take a couple of buses, and you could have times that they would go, and I think that would, that would really get people enthusiastic about bringing their car down, knowing they could get back home. And it wouldn't just be the beach area, it would be up in our area too, so... Right, right. But again, congratulations to everybody involved. It was, I don't think it could have been, for the kind of storm it was, I don't think you could have had a better result than what you had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. And if I could, you know, first off, you know, I thank you for that, and as you alluded to, people, people by and large were terrific. People were great. I mean, I was, as you said, I was driving around with Chief Dougherty, I was driving around a little bit with Superintendent Goodwin, and people were out there, you know, like some councilors, you know, have said, shoveling themselves out, helping their neighbors out, and, you know, giving thumbs up and all this stuff, which really, it's good for morale for us anyway, you know, to, that, you know, people recognize or at least appreciate the fact that we're all out there doing the very best that we can. Do we bat 1,000? No. But if we batted 900, that's not a bad average. I mean, we tried to do the very, very best that we can. I'm sure there's residents right now that are saying, well, look, my house, it took them two days to get there maybe, and the only thing I can do is say my apologies for that. We tried to keep every street and certainly the main arteries of the city open, you know, as much as we could, because the beginning of the storm, certainly during the storm and the height of the storm itself, our goal was just to not lose the streets, as you alluded to, and to make sure that public safety apparatus was able to get down, you know, to various, obviously, main arteries and into as many, as many streets as possible. And also, we were focused on flooding. You know, we spent a lot of time and resources, you know, watching the tides and, because, you know, we had up to 70 mile an hour gusts of winds, and, you know, so you just don't know how that's going to go. In the event we needed to evacuate people, we obviously wanted to be prepared for that. So there was a lot that went into it in addition to just snow plowing, you know, there was a lot more that we had to be cognizant of, but I think most people recognize that, and the fact that you're getting phone calls, Councilor, is a tribute to really everybody's, I mean, I think probably I heard from just about every single councilor saying, look, I got a call from this resident, I got a call from that resident, can you do, and so it really helped us as we went along, you know, you know, by clearing out streets and making sure that everything was going smooth. So it was a real team effort. It was, it was really the entire community getting involved, as well as our elected leaders, so thank you.
Councilor Janino.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I want to agree with all the other councilors, and thank you guys. You know, I was out there shoveling with my family from 10 o'clock the night the storm started until 10 o'clock the next morning, back and forth, and, you know, you did see fire trucks going by and police cars going by and ambulances getting through, and throughout the night, those plows and those emergency responders were out there, and they were doing their job and working those crazy long hours, so you've got to commend them for that, and it's really a fantastic effort. And I know we've already talked a lot about, you know, having people shovel their fire hydrants out and clearing their vents, so they're not worrying about that, and the drains near their houses, but something else that we need to think about now moving forward is the cleanup after the storm. So now that all the snow is melting, kind of where it's going, and another thing too, now, I know there's no school tomorrow, but once school does go back into session, that our residents are aware that there are going to be kids still walking in the street, and there are going to still be kids walking in the school areas, and it's hard to see around those big snow banks. So I think kind of the next aspect of this is making sure our residents are aware to go really slow when we go back to school, when we look back into that, and just even during the day driving, you know, people backing in and out of their driveways, it's really hard to see around those snow mountains, and that's inevitable. You know, like you said, we had a ton, a ton of snow, so there is nowhere to put it, but just really making sure that people are aware of this, and, you know, to be careful with the kids, because even today, myself driving here, kids are running across Broadway, and they're, they're kids, they don't know, they're playing in the snow. So I think that's really important. Another question I have too is I know there are some residents concerned off of Washington Ave with flooding, especially in respect to the storm and kind of where all this melted snow is going to go. So has there been any talk about kind of that? Thank you.
You know, we, we're not anticipating any real, at least given what we know right now, any real major flooding event that's going to have people, you know, cause for concern. I know they have had some issues down there, and there's been some talk, you know, I think we need to really keep up with the maintenance of that new pump down there. For some reason, there seems to be getting grease in one of the, in one of the, you know, like propeller components of the pump, and so, you know, we are having some issues down there, but I don't, you know, right now as it stands, we don't, you know, if it, if it was going to be 75 degrees tomorrow, and then it was going to be some heavy rain, but right now, the way it is, I think, I don't think that we're going to have any type of trouble. But certainly, if any of those residents down there... of trouble. But certainly, if any of those residents down there have a problem, they can call us, and, you know, we're ready to respond in any way that we have to. The other thing that you had mentioned, Counselor, was the, you know, the height of the snowbanks. And, and, you know, I think you'll notice, or probably have seen, some of them starting to come down even just today because of some of the rain and the fact that it's been warmer. And so, we kind of made a judgment call today. We could have brought in, you know, many more pieces of heavy equipment, trailers, and then try to trailer the snow off. The problem is, is very, very expensive. I mean, we'd be looking at about another $150,000 of, 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 you know, taxpayer money that, you know, I know Counselor Penta mentioned some of it may be recoverable if we do get, you know, a hold of some federal or state money that may come in as a result of the storm. But there's, there's a lot of different criteria involved in how much we can get and for exactly what that money is going to be used for. So, it's not just a plain, well, we'll get 70% of everything that we've spent. There's, there's, you know, so, we just made basically a judgment call that we're going to let the weather take its course, let some of these snowbanks start to melt and, and drift away, and, and try to save that $150,000. We're hoping it's a good decision. But, you know, again, it's another reason why we called off school tomorrow, you know, because we want to make sure that the kids are obviously safe. So, your point is well taken. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, I want to commend you for a fine job for a storm that was unbelievable. I know Chief, Chief Dougherty in charge of the Emergency Committee, him and his crew did, were out there all weekend doing a great job. And I also want to commend Superintendent Goodwin, Paula Genzio, and the rest of the crew down at the DPW. Mainly, Donnie, for, for the communication. It's, when I get all these phone calls, I, I managed to get through to one of yours when I had a problem, and I want to, you know, I think you hit it right on the nail when you said that, you know, you can't, you can't make 100% of the people happy. Unfortunately, you can try all you want, and, but I, I feel that 90% of the, you know, I got calls, I got calls back thanking me that the DPW did show up and took care of the problem. And, but again, Counselor Woman Janino mentions a good point. It's a good thing we aren't having school tomorrow. He's just coming here today for the meeting, pulling out of my street on Sargent Street. The mounts, you know, I, I had to creep out, it was the traffic, and you're going to have kids walking on Sargent Street. The school is cleaned up beautiful. They did a fine job clearing the sidewalks around the school. But it's just for people to get to the schools, I think Superintendent Dakin did the right thing in canceling school tomorrow. But is there any plan on removing that school superintendent, removing that snow from those corners? I know that's...
We were out today, Counselor, removing snow in various parts of the city. It's very tedious work, time consuming, just the schools alone. Paul Revere School took an entire day to clear the snow from there. The Whalen School, the same thing.
They did a great job in those schools. I saw it.
The, the real problem is with some of the merchants and some of these private contractors that are piling the snow up on corners. They're using our crosswalks as, as storage areas. We, we really need to come down on this or rewrite some ordinances because that's the, the number one issue we're having. We rented some sidewalk plows, snow blowers that worked tremendous, but when you get to the corners, you just can't cut through a pile of snow that's 8, 10, 12, 13 feet high by 12 feet wide. It's just, it's a very difficult ordeal. So, what we're trying to do is pick away at these corners and use the snow blowers to do, to the rest of the work. We've had some success with it today. We'll be out there again tomorrow doing the same thing. Will we get them all by the end of the week? I doubt it. It's, they're throughout the entire city. It's not just, you know, relegated to, to Broadway. It's Marlin Street, Sargent Street, Washington Ave, Winter Ave, Shirley Ave, Revere Street, you name it. There's just mounds everywhere preventing people from utilizing the public crosswalks. So, I think this is something that we really need to sit down and talk about in committee with Counselor Powers, Public Works, and put something into place that this, this just doesn't happen in, in the future.
You know, I just, it's amazing though, I, watching the news, Boston, streets that are both ways not even touched. I mean, you didn't see that in Revere. You did, I know some of the, maybe the short dead end streets had to wait a while, especially in my ward, to get hit, but they, they did get hit. I got a phone call back saying that they did show up, you know. A matter of fact, one was a complaint that they put the snow back in the driveway on one of them. But again, you were doing, they were doing their job and, but I just want to thank you for all the hard work, and thank you, thank you guys for me, please.
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. And at this time, and I would also like to thank the mayor for his support, the council for their support, Gene Dougherty, Joe Cafarelli, the entire emergency management team were terrific. But I really have to tip my hat to the guys that work for me. They really put the effort out there. They, they really broke their backs. Some guys went 40 hours without sleep. I just don't know how they did it. It's just, you know, so I really have to tip my hat to them. They really stepped up for the people of this city. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you, Mr. Mayor, and your team, you did a great job, without question. This is one of the few storms that we had of this magnitude where it was really predicted almost a week ahead of time. So, that gave you and your staff an opportunity to come up with a game plan. Governor Patrick, by telling everyone to head over off the roadways to give our DPW complete rain as far as the roads, granted when you're going to see, like, Revere, some small sidewalks, small streets, et cetera. Counselor Janino brought up a key point as far as I was concerned, and that would be basically with the school. Coming down Broadway and Revere Streets, another, I saw some DPW guys down there, they were trying to lower the elevation. And I think that has to be a prerequisite for tomorrow, as Counselor Goodwin indicated. With DPW, whenever I call them, I saw the guys out there, they responded greatly. I was down on the beach taking a tour, and I saw the fire department digging out hydrants, and I haven't seen that in years, which is great. And naturally, Michael Conley and his crew going around. Everyone worked hand in hand because they all knew what's expected of them. But I think we have to make more effort with the schools, the high banks, as a couple of councils already mentioned. But congratulations to Donnie, Gene, and the whole staff that did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. And a few, a few of the councilors, you know, yourself, Counselor Janino, Patch, Riordan, have talked about other cities too. And, you know, really, you know, not to, not that I like, I mean, we have our, you know, we worry about our own city. But I guess it's worth noting that, you know, as, as tough as the roads may look to some people when they look out their windows or whatever, other cities and towns are not doing any better than we are. I mean, we have done a, I think, and you guys have acknowledged that, and a lot of our residents have. I think that the city really has done a terrific job. You know, we're a coastal community, one of the hottest hit, you know, areas during the storm. And so, when you really think about that, and you think about situations that have occurred in other cities and towns, I mean, it's really, it amazes me when I think of the guys that were out there, as Donnie said, 40 hours without sleep. Some guys, you know, maybe pull over on the side of the road for an hour, close their eyes a little bit, and then get back out so that we don't lose whole streets and whole sections like they did in some other cities and towns. One of our neighboring cities lost, I think, what, about 25% of their streets? You know, so, and, and it's easy to do in a storm of that magnitude. So, you know, it's, it's, it's really a tribute to all those guys that were out there, all those people that were out there working, you know, day and night. So, anyway.
Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend the mayor and Donnie and Chief Dougherty on a great job. Having the opportunity to work in Boston with a bunch of people from lots of different communities and seeing some of the pictures that they had of their streets, and I got to show off, you know, some pavement to, to folks, and they were surprised to see how well we've done. And I think it is a tribute to your leadership and to the work that you've done to professionalize city services.
Thank you, Counselor.
One, one question, I know it was, it's been an issue, is throwing snow into the street. Did we end up fining anyone, or did we have a, a kind of place, a plan in place if we saw people? I know it'd be tough because you have to actually catch them in the act, but did, were there, you know, any fines written? Do we know?
You know, I don't believe that actually any fines were issued. I know I saw Superintendent Goodwin hop out of his truck about 300 times to tell people to stop throwing snow, but, you know, you know, there were, you know, some of the hills that we really try to keep up with, like, for example, up off of Shirley Ave, up, up in, up in Lake Yon, but those hills were like clean, cleared.
Yeah.
And then, you know, two hours later, we drive by, and like, the street looks, has like three feet of snow in it, you know? I mean, you know, it's frustrating. So, you know, naturally, at that point, we sent the police up there, we sent the DPW crews up there, and, you know, we were prepared to start fining people. I think just the police showing up kind of, because at first, they really didn't want to stop. I mean, they were just saying, we're just going to keep putting our snow out in the street, you know?
Yeah.
So, we kind of, you know, you know, as they say, we sent our DPW crews back up there again, and, and law enforcement, and so, but, but, but that's really, it's a real problem. You know, what, you know, what you're talking about is a real problem because, especially in a storm like this, if it's four or five inches of snow, well, now they come back and they do it again. When you're trying to keep up with that much snow, and you go by and it takes you, I don't know how many passes to just keep up with it, and now, you know, an hour later, they're throwing all the snow back out in the middle of the street. That's not good. I mean, it just, it's a waste of money, it's a waste of time. You're taking a piece of apparatus or a vehicle or, that could be going somewhere else and helping some other area. But now they have to go back to that spot. So, it's a real problem, and we, you know, we're going to try to do more, I think, in the, I think in the future, we'll try to do more to address that. And if it takes, you know, listen, we don't like to go out and fine people, but at the same time, you know, when 95% of the people are adhering to it and helping the city out and helping their neighbors out, the other 5% may deserve a fine if they're going to, if they're going to, you know, if they're going to act that way.
I agree, and I appreciate Mike. There we go. I agree with you, and I think, you know, your, your team did a good job of making all of us look really good. So, great job.
It was a team effort, Counselor, and everybody involved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, now that everybody's had their piece, it's a commendable evening. I have to repeat, I'd like to repeat everything that everybody has said, but I'm not. Just a couple of things I do want to bring out. I want to congratulate you and the chief, Chief Dougherty, for the code reds. I think they were very, they were good updates. People, I got emails from people, I got phone calls from people, thanks, thanking the city for, for what's going, letting them know what's going on. You know, a lot of times, they're in the, excuse the pun, but they're in the dark. So, you know, that was really, really good, and I'm glad that was implemented. Again, to Donnie and his crew, we had a couple medicals today that we had to address, and the, the team was right on it, and I thanked them for it. And, and the folks called me back to thank the DPW guys, and I got calls the other night from folks on Hillside Avenue thanking the DPW guys for the great job that they were doing. So, people recognize that. You know, it's nice that we hear a thank you once in a while because we're normally in a thankless job. Yeah, but it's nice that some people realize that we're there, and we're there to help them. I'm glad you mentioned the Shirley Ave Hills. You know, they've, they've been a problem for many years, even before I was around. But I know we sort of have it under control, but sometimes you get some new neighbors that don't know the rules, and they just do what they have to do. But I think we do have to look at somehow giving those noncriminal citations and let them know that we mean business. I know that DPW has that authority to do. I don't know if the fire does, but I, I don't know, I know they have parking tickets that can give out for certain, certain items, but...
Well, that could be something we could have, you know, I think you're hitting on something, Mr. President. I think inspectional services maybe should be out there during the storm. I know, obviously, they can issue citations.
Whatever it takes. But I think it's something we often, we should look at. And one, one group of folks that haven't been acknowledged tonight was Revere Police Department. And, you know, I think they did an outstanding job, and, you know, their job is as thankless as anybody's, you know, because they have to go and deal with civil issues of people throwing people's snow in front of someone's driveway or on a property. And, you know, I've been in, I've seen situations kind of get out of control. But I know Revere Police, they were all with their new Humvees and their new combat equipment and going through the snow, and, and it worked well. You know, and they were glad they have it, that they knew they can get from place to place with those new vehicles that they have onboard. One thing I want to mention is the parking garage, and, you know, I want to thank the city council because, believe it or not, they may not, may not remember, but a little over a year ago, we passed a motion asking that the MBTA implement a reduced fee for snow emergencies. And that was my motion back then. And I had been in touch with Secretary Davy, especially when we did the ribbon cutting down at the garage. And he's, he was open to it. He didn't shut the door on it. And when I called his administrative assistant, Karen Dispirito, she jumped right on it. I had spoken to the MBTA folks. They called the MBTA and MassDOT to see if they, things like that could happen, and they made it happen. And I thank Karen, and I thank the secretary directly. You know, so, we thank them, and I just want them to be acknowledged that, you know, they, they were part of the package. I want to thank the JROTC kids at the high school, another, another thing. Now, these kids are out shoveling snow for the senior citizens. They don't charge them. It's their community service. And I think, I want to thank Nick Buah for getting them together, and for Major Baucher and Sergeant Major Callender to bring this forward to you just last week, you know, to get the kids out. And they were doing that. And, you know, and it helped everybody. So, that was a good thing. The parking bands work. Shirley Ave works, the hills work. We started a new area that hasn't been posted yet, Walnut Place and Northshire Road, Old Northshire Road. We've made arrangements for people for those snow parking areas to park in alternate places other than the parking garage. Suffolk Downs has offered their property behind the footwear. So, if anybody wanted, and Donnie was kind enough to say, well, when the storm's over and we're free, we'll open it up for them so they can get out. So, there's teamwork, and that, that's what I'm looking for, and I know everybody else is looking for. Now, last item, I have to bring up the negative, and Counselor Powers kind of mentioned it, parking at the school lots. If we want to talk about getting folks off the streets in a case like this, there's a potential of getting 500 cars off the street around the city of Revere. And I think it's imperative that we work something out with Dr. Dakin, that we allow people to park on the school properties. We'll get them open, there's a way to do it. Get them off the street and make it available to them. It's, it's our property, it belongs to the city of Revere, and we should be able to utilize that for a couple of days. And here it is, a couple more days that they're not in school, that we could, could have got them in the spaces and, and got them out timely. So, that's the only negative I have, but we ought to think about it in the future, that if we get a magnitude of storm like this, that we make that happen. So, with that, again, kudos to everybody today, my councilors.
Just one point of information here, one question, quick question. This was the first time I heard there was no school tomorrow. Is there going to be a code red put out that there's no?
No, I'm sure that the, I'm sure that the superintendent will send his message out. I mean, that was the word that I got just a few minutes ago, unless that's been, you know, that, you know, but that's the word that I received, that school was being canceled. Did anyone else hear that, or was that just me? Okay, well...
Dr. Dakin, he does his own calling.
He'll do his own calling, but just as a heads up, I mean, you know, my office was informed that school was going to be canceled. So, if that's wrong, there will be a, a message from...
After driving the streets, I think it's a great, great idea.
Yep.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for the update.
Yes, school, school is definitely canceled.
Okay, cool. Did you hear that, everybody? Okay, cool. Did you hear that, everybody? School's off tomorrow.
Well, Mr. President, if I could, I'd like to thank the Council. I'd like to thank the Council for being as involved as they were during the storm and keeping us abreast of what was going on. You know, naturally, we couldn't be in all places at all times. So, you know, your help was greatly appreciated. And, you know, we're going to continue with the cleanup effort. And just ask again for patience, that's all. That's the biggest thing at this point. If there's one thing we could ask for is, is our residents continue patience. And, and again, like all of you have said, thank you to our residents for really, really stepping up. I mean, as much as our people stepped up and, and did the plowing and did all the work that it took to maintain the safety and security of our city, our residents really were a big, huge part of that. And I want to thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, we'll place the rest of this on file. Next order of business.
Calendar item number six, communication from Edward Stukels relative to alleged building code violations at 25 Ellerton Street.
Mr. Stukels.
I'm Edward Stukel. I live on 21 Ellerton Street. First of all.
There you go. Good.
I live on 21 Ellerton Street in Revere. And my neighbor is Joe Salamone. He's, he's 21 Ellerton, 25 Ellerton Street. And there has been a continuing problem for the last year over the implementation of code restrictions on building procedures. I have written some 13 letters over the last year to officials of various capacities. I have submitted DVDs supporting my views and providing evidence in case anyone wishes to study further. I have submitted those letters. I have submitted a compilation of all the letters I have sent out and given to the City Council. In my opinion, anyone who wants to see the issues as I see them may inquire with the City Council to see whether I make a point or not and whether my complaints are legitimate. I also think that it would be not good use of our mutual time for me to try to summarize all those letters because I probably would not do a fair job. So, I have offered to the Revere City Council a review of my statements.
Excuse me, Mr. Stukels. Just, I know you're going to go on, but we do allow a three-minute presentation. So, try and make it sweet if you would.
I'm asking if you will allow me to read one page, which is the page that I submitted, but only you, I assume, has received it. So, if anyone has any questions, I will answer the questions. Otherwise, after I read the statement, I have no further comments. Can I read it? Okay. This is to the Revere City Council. Gentlemen and ladies of the Revere City Council, this communication represents a request by the law-abiding citizen of good standing in the city of Revere, Edward Stukels, to have certain issues of major legal importance be put on the February agenda calendar to the Revere City Council. In two statements, request by Mr. Stukels to the City Council to have the city of Revere comply with the Freedom of Information Act requests, and B, the city of Revere's responsibility to deal with threat issued by Mr. Salamone of 24th Ellerton to tear up the fence separating property to 21th Ellerton. I have three small paragraphs to read, and then I'm done. For approximately a year, the builder, owner, and now resident of 25th Ellerton Street, Joe Salamone, has allegedly constructed his house and resides therein without having adhered to all required local, state, and federal building codes. Based on every citizen's right established by Freedom of Information Act and the Massachusetts Public Information Law, to have access to such public documents such as surveyors' reports, inspection reports, environmental compliance reports, et cetera, I am looking forward to the city of Revere Council to make accessible and available to me all documents that the law encompasses that had to be complied with in order to have obtained a residency permit for 25th Ellerton Street, Revere. Over the past year, I have repeatedly requested in writing such documents, as indicated in categories above, from appropriate members of the city of Revere officials, but have been totally ignored. I have been denied fair and equal treatment while my adversary, Joe Salamone, has been provided with free professional services by the city of Revere officials without oversight. I am making an offer at the time of this request to the Council to place on the Council's agenda to provide to the city of Revere a complete set of records of my previous efforts to communicate with Revere officials over the issues of 25th Ellerton versus 21th Ellerton. The dated letters and DVDs previously provided piecemeal to Revere officials. In the dark of night, Joe Salamone has been damaging our grapevines that grow on the fence separating the two properties. When we protested, Mr. Salamone threatened to destroy the fence and said he will take over our 21th Ellerton property. My concern, Joe Salamone has no right to destroy the fence based on the legal principle of adverse possession, which clearly favors us. We have lived there 20, about 15 years or so, and the previous residents have also had that fence in place. Due to the construction of the house at 25th Ellerton, it is surrounded, 25th Ellerton is surrounded by ground elevation that is as much as six inches higher than the previous house elevation that existed on 25th Ellerton. Note, the surveyors' reports, if they still exist, about ground level elevation at 25th Ellerton are intentionally erroneous. Edward Stukels.
Thank you, Mr. Stukels. Timing was perfect because I was just going to ask you to stop.
So, no questions?
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call on Counselor Powers because he's more up on that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm very familiar with this matter. I've received numerous letters and some videotapes from Mr. Stukulus. At one point, there was a meeting by the Conservation Commission on the property owned by Mr. Salamone, which is adjacent to Mr. Stukulus's property. I attended that meeting with members of the Conservation Commission. One of the things that was brought into question was the height of the inflows for the compensatory storage of water. My own opinion was, not being a member of the Commission, but my own opinion was that they could have been lowered somewhat to comply with the ground level. I am not an engineer, nor am I a surveyor, and I can not say one way or the other whether or not that the property was raised according to the six inches. I will say this, however, that I did take the time to go down there and at the request of Mr. Stukulus. Also, I am, it's my understanding that any and all documents, which are city documents, are and should be available to Mr. Stukulus through the city clerk's office, who is in fact, by state law, the keeper of records. It is my understanding also that any documents requested, there is a charge for those documents payable to the city of Revere for copying said documents and perhaps even researching those documents. Although I shouldn't think they would be too hard to get. The Conservation Commission certainly has a record of all those documents, as does the building inspector. With that said, I believe that the matter with regard to the fence between Mr. Salamone and Mr. Stukulus, that is a legal matter. I know adverse possession is a legal matter which can only be resolved through the land court in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I'm sure Mr. Stukulus would agree with that. Pardon me?
I'm sorry.
However, I would, I would employ Mr. Stukulus to request in writing those documents to the city clerk, Ashley Melnick. I am sure that she will, with due process, make those documents available. Again, there is a charge for that, as there is to any other individual who comes to the city clerk's office or any other office in the city of Revere requesting public information. So, again, Mr. Stukulus, this is Ashley Melnick, a city clerk. She's right here. I'm sure she will cooperate and comply with any requests that you may have with regard to the documents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Just as, you know, I have received all your information, sir, over the years. I remember back in 2011 when we got some letters from you. But I do have letters that were sent to you from the mayor at the time, Mayor Ambrosino, in 2011, and one from the, excuse me, ma'am, excuse me, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
That you got letters in 2011 from the mayor, Ambrosino at the time, and also from the Conservation Commission, from Andrew DeSantis in January 22nd of 2012, explaining his side, you know, their decisions, the DEP file numbers. And the mayor even said, and I'll read the last line, that unfortunately, the private damage and/or inconvenience can only be remedied in a court of law by means of a private cause of action between you and the abutter. Such private nuisance cannot be remedied by the city because they do not implicate nor violate any local ordinance. The mayor did state that the building inspector and the Conservation Commission inspected the property. They found no violations and they issued the occupancy permits at the time. Now, I do say to you in closing is two things. The Freedom of Information Act that you've mentioned is for federal documents only. Okay? These are not federal documents that we're talking about. You should make a request, a written request in writing, in accordance with the mass public record law. And again, like Counselor Powers said, you have to pay per copy on a normal eight and a half by 11. If there are plans that you need, you have to pay whatever the cost is to reproduce those plans. So, sir, unfortunately, this is not a City Council issue. We, you know, we're sorry for that. And we've gone to our motions to get things, to find out what's going on. So, we gave you your time. We feel that you have, you know, as far as we're concerned, and treat it according as far as our building department is concerned and Conservation Commission. If you want to pursue it further, sir, that's up to you.
Right. Thank you very much. We're at that.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Return to our regular order of business.
Calendar item number one, report of the Public Works Subcommittee.
Counselor Powers, thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee Subcommittee met on February 4th of this year and to discuss potential problems with the John Avenue Pump Station located in the Pointerpine section of the city. And I'll just briefly, if I may, Counselor Ganasso, Pinter, Patch, Ridden, and myself, members of the committee, were at that meeting. Also, Counselors Arigo, Zambudo, Correggio, and Janino and Hass were at that meeting, as was the designer, Charles Lombardi of Brown and Caldwell, Albanese Construction Company who constructed that pump station, Superintendent Goodwin, and the city engineer. There were several items brought up. First was the alarm going off on the pump station. Briefly, I will explain that. The wires, that pump station has been wired for smoke detection, for oil spills in the generator system, and also for intrusion. Part of the contract was to have that building wired. The other part of the system, which is not, was not part of the contract, was to have a spider system, as it's known, put in that would automatically send signals from those systems that were wired in to the appropriate officials if there were an incident. One of the other issues was the wet well. I'm told by Superintendent Goodwin that the wet well will be drained, cleaned, and a subfloor will be put over that to prevent anyone from falling into that. The, two of the other issues were the shut offs. I was down there today, and the locks have been installed on the shut offs so that they are inoperable as far as any vandals going in there and pulling those shut offs down, shutting off the pumps. There is one other issue that I have down there, and I've discussed it with the engineer that designed that building and Superintendent Goodwin. And that would be to put a casing over three wires that if you're looking at the building to the right, are protruding from the grounds into the pump station. And I'm told that by Superintendent Goodwin, that that will be done. And I intend to make sure that that is done because I think that is a potential problem for vandalism. As far as the cost of that pump station, all of that information is available through the purchasing agent's office, including any extras that were added on to that, such as bricking in the windows and the spider system, which eventually we're going to put in, and the work on the wet well. And there was work done on the sewer there. There was fencing put up. Farther neighbors, there was a hot top area done down there. So, as far as, the other thing that was mentioned was that if one of those pumps does fail, and there are, actually, there's, it's an extra pump down there. There are originally two, there are now three. If one of those pumps does fail, that signal on that will go right to the DPW and/or the Superintendent for immediate response. So, as far as the sending out a signal with regard to a malfunction in the pump, my understanding is that that is all in place. The only other things, again, would be the spider system. And with that, Mr. Counsel President, I'll conclude my remarks. That's the report of the committee. Thank you.
Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have just a couple of questions for Counselor Powers. How was the operation of the pump during the storm?
My understanding is, I didn't receive one phone call from that area down there with regard to the operation of the from that area down there with regard to the operation of that pump, nor did I receive any phone calls with regard to Jackson Street, Atwood Street, or the tide gate out on the B&amp;M tracks, which are all part of Ward 5.
And the other question, Public Works was down there today for something. I don't know what it was for. Can you explain what that, why they were there at that pumping station?
They were down there today to put on the locks that I had requested. And I, as a matter of fact, I made it a point to stop there to make sure that those locks were in place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. I want to thank the chairman for holding the meeting, at which time we had the designers of the pump station, the builder of the pump station, the city engineer, and the DPW superintendent. At that meeting, several questions were asked. And I think it was very informative to the neighborhood to know that when they see a light go off, that they're not expecting sewage 15 minutes later in their house. Because that's what used to happen before the new pump station. So, they were relieved to hear that this was an intrusion alarm or it may have been caused by water getting into the generator area. And these lights they were seeing were not potential sewage backups in their home. So, I'm grateful we had that meeting. I think it was very informative, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the committee report, to accept the committee report and place it on file, in favor, all opposed, voting so ordered.
Calendar item number two, report of the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee.
Counselor Arigo.
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, Legislative Affairs Subcommittee met with two items on the agenda. First was 12-272, An Ordinance Amending the City of Revere's Sewer Use Regulations. And the second was 12-081, An Act Relative to the Issuance of Secondhand Dealer Licenses. I'm not going to belabor the points of either, but we've had a number of discussions on the sewer use regulations. We were informed this evening that, by Frank Strinchi, that our, that the city will include an amnesty period for those who are in violation of the new regulations, which I think was a good compromise for a lot of folks that had issues with the enforcement of the new regulations. And on the secondhand dealer licenses, this is an issue that Counselor Guanasso had brought up last year. And I think it was a consensus of the majority of the committee to move forward with passing this legislation that would, special legislation that would limit the number of licenses to three in the city. And I look forward to those passing the full council. Thank you.
Any counsel's comments? Just if I may, you said three secondhand dealers?
The special legislation limits it to three.
Even though we already have six in the city?
There, three new, three new licenses.
Three new ones?
Yes.
So, we're allowing up to nine?
Yes. Their grandfather did.
So, if, you can't get anymore, but if they, you can lose them by attrition and they can't get them back? Okay.
That's correct.
On the committee report, to accept... Okay, we have three votes to do. Ordered to a second reading. All in favor, all opposed, voting so ordered. Ordered on a third and final reading. All in favor, all opposed, hearing none, voting so ordered. Roll call. Madam Clerk.
Roll call for engrossment and ordainment of an ordinance amending the sewer use regulations. Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Corregio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hass.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained.
For files special legislation.
All in favor, all opposed, roll call.
This is a motion to file an act relative to the issuance of secondhand dealers licenses. Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Corregio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hass.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo.
Absent.
Is absent, Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the special legislation will be filed. Calendar item number three, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Mr. Henry Mancini to the Revere Housing Authority. Calendar item number four, communication from the purchasing agent relative to the bulk purchasing of goods and services.
Motion placed on file. Move.
Calendar item number five, communication from the planning board relative to an ordinance regulating medical marijuana treatment centers.
We're going to make that part of the CZ in the zoning committee.
Calendar item number seven, communication from attorney Douglas Erico requesting to appear before the city council to discuss parking issues at Village Court condominiums in relation to PUD 12-01.
That's been put on hold by request of the attorney.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Lauren Devella as a constable.
Appointments Committee.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to various bond orders for Staff Sergeant James J. Hill School.
Gentlemen, this is going up for a public hearing. He asks that we not have to discuss it tonight. It'll have the public hearing. It'll go into zoning, I mean, ways and means, excuse me. And also, also go into parks and youth and recreation, where we have to give up potential parkland. So, once we have the public hearing...
Mr. President, may I suggest that we refer this to the committee the whole at the appropriate time? Because I think this is really significant, some very significant issues here.
Just a point of information. It has to go to a public hearing before... Right. So, we can decide that later. But, you know, it will go into committee after the public hearing for discussion. And that would, that hearing will be on March 11 for the bond orders. Okay? So, you know, there will be a lot of discussion, ladies and gentlemen. So, you know, try and have all your questions and information that you need answered, held for whatever committee we decide to put it on, put it in at the time. So, and try and keep this thing, you know, moving through the council. Madam Clerk, item number 10. Rule, under Rule 38, we will ask all the counselors if they wish to hear any of their motions. If we do not hear their motion requested, it will be accepted as passed. And I will start at my right with Counselor Arigo. Do you have any, up to three, sir?
I'll pass.
Counselor Arigo passes. Counselor Corregio.
Sixteen only.
Madam Vice President, do you have any? Not, pass. Counselor Guanasso.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Fourteen and fifteen. Counselor Hass.
Pass.
Pass. Counselor Patch.
I pass also.
Pass. Counselor Penta.
Ten.
Item 10, Counselor Powers.
Pass.
Pass. Counselor Riordan.
Pass.
Pass. Counselor Zambudo.
Pass.
Passes. And I will ask that item number 13 be withdrawn. I voted a council, all in favor, all opposed, voting so ordered. And I guess we'll go on to item number 10. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor Penta that the parking clerk recommends to the traffic commission to institute a new parking violation as follows. Group D fine will be $50. Parking of any bus, taxi cab, hackney, pupil, or livery vehicle upon any street other than that, a taxi stand.
Mr. President.
Counselor Penta, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, this is already in front of the traffic commission to go to a public hearing on the ordinance to weigh the hours of wanting to write tickets out. Unfortunately, ticket writers are not on the hours that the ordinance says. So, we're going 24 hours. But this is becoming, in my ward, I'm sure in your ward, and I see it all over the city, but it's starting to really... The past year, I've been actually on top of this as much as I can. But there's some streets that have 7, 12 livery cars, Boston hackneys. Not one of these cars are registered in the city of Revere. This is not to go after our local taxi stands. They do everything they're supposed to do. Park off-street and everything else. You know, you cannot go to this city to get a livery license unless you have a place of business to park your car. So, what's happened is they're running businesses out of their houses. They're taking up streets, they're parking in permit parking areas, and, you know, and it's cheaper to get a ticket and pay it than to go to Boston and get a piece of property and park and do the right thing. So, this is just another part of this. And the clerk actually has the right to increase it up to $50 on basis, almost like a resolution. We're giving the right to do that. So, with that being said, I'd appreciate if everybody would pass this. Thank you.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor request the traffic commission to look into the feasibility of making Fernwood Avenue one-way from Broadway into Fernwood Ave. In the interest of public safety and area residents' request.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, we have to be ready for the new, the advent of the new school. But over and above that, area residents that I represent, and this is a peculiar, one of the peculiar streets where its representation is by two ward councils, Ward 3 and Ward 4. And the people that I represent are up in arms in terms of, they can't exit that street prop. They can't, when they go down the street, is there another car coming at them? It's a narrow street. And then to add insult to injury, there's a taxi stand right there. You know? And so, what happens is, the people can't traverse that area. What we're suggesting is making that one-way and from Broadway into Fernwood Ave. Eliminating the people exiting Walgreens and coming out and using that street. They should use the main street on Broadway to make sure there's a traffic pattern that has some control. And this area resident who's been adamant about this for years spoke with the current police chief. And the police chief also agrees. So, I think what we're doing is, I'm just asking this to come before the traffic commission. For once and for all, let's put this to rest and hear the input of maybe area residents and other councils who have wished to voice their opinion. But I just want the opportunity to go before traffic to speak on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. And while I simply certainly sympathize with the situation down there, I think we are faced with the inevitability, at least I'd like to think so, that that's going to be an entrance, egress, et cetera, access point, if you will, for the new Hill School. And while I certainly have no objection to checking on the feasibility or checking out the feasibility of any proposal, it may be a bit premature, given the fact that we have certainly a lot of studying to do as far as traffic patents and what we're going to do for traffic surrounding that whole area as we come upon the new era of the new school, not to mention the refurbishment of Harry Del Russo Stadium. So, I have no objection specifically to this, to this, sending this to the traffic commission. I have a feeling the traffic commission is going to want to take a very long, odd look at it in reference to the new plans for the entire area. So, that's my only comment at this point.
Any other counselors on the motion? Looking to the feasibility? All in favor, all opposed, voting so ordered.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor request the traffic commission to look into the feasibility of instituting one-way streets as follows. McKinley Street, one-way exiting onto Revere Street. Cleveland Street, one-way entering from Revere Street. Roosevelt Street, one-way entering from Revere Street. Washington Street, from Cleveland Street to McKinley and from Roosevelt to McKinley. This motion is made at the request of several residents in the area due to traffic flow caused by the new Paul Revere School.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, this has been a well-thought-out plan. I waited a year and a half to make this presentation before this council. Based on the fact that I did area studies with residents, we did all the possible reviews. I do have one close friend on Washington Street who objects to the portion that refers to one street here, Roosevelt. But I hate to beg the difference with this individual based on the fact that we have a traffic pattern now at the Paul Revere School, whereas the cars go down and make a left when they exit the parking, and then they go up. Now, to circumvent some situations, we have to make a plan based on the fact that the people on McKinley Street are getting hit right now with two-way traffic. That's very unfair. The people on Cleveland Street are being hit with two-way traffic. That's very unfair. And obviously, Roosevelt Street will be taken care of once the traffic pattern has been established. And what happens is, Washington Street becomes the main street where, you know, it's very, very simple. It's a, it's a process that will take place and make everybody live happily thereafter. I've had residents that I represent on Atwood Street ask that something like this be put in place. You can't traverse some of these streets because there's parking on both sides, and it makes it impossible, impossible for traffic to flow in an orderly fashion. I think that this ought to be given serious attention by the traffic commission. And I am going to fight tooth and nail to make sure that this happens. Because this wasn't something that just took place when I saw the Paul Revere School being built. I said, "Let me be objective about this." I met with certain residents in the area who voiced a concern about it. And I listened to what they had to say. And then I went about watching and viewing for myself. Myself and my son sat in the car night after night on a few events, watching the traffic flow, watching the impact that it has created at a time of school break and when kids are going to school. This is a very, very serious situation going on. And I know people are creatures of habit. Once they get to the way that this is put out for them, they're going to love it. It's going to be workable and doable. And it's going to be, more importantly than anything, it's going to be public safety-minded. The children, the people traveling these streets will be safe because you'll have an orderly flow of traffic going in a certain way. And so, people can expect that the traffic will go that way. And right now, they don't know. It's like a dodgems down there. They go back and forth, back... McKinley Street's a nightmare. They're coming at you both directions. It's a nightmare. So, this will, I think, will alleviate that. Will there be a couple maybe unhappy with this situation, Mr. President? There probably will be. But the majority of them will love it. All I want them to do is try it out for a year and then tell me after a year how they like it. So, I will be arguing this before the traffic commission because, you know, some of their mindset, I don't want to predetermine this, but I think that they have to listen to what I have to say on this because I put some real thought into this process. I didn't just create this overnight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other counselors on the motion? All in favor, all opposed, voting so ordered.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Counselor Corregio that the mayor request the parking clerk to amend the parking control officer's schedule so as not to issue violations on Saturdays.
Counselor Corregio.
Thank you, Mr. President. This came about, numerous residents have brought this to my attention. And I told them I bring it to the attention of the city council. To me, I says, a lot of businesses need a boost. And someone goes in the store for five minutes, they get ticketed, especially in the Broadway business area. Saturdays, it would give the residents of Revere a little bit of relief. And also, the businesses, to help out the businesses, the way the economy is right now, business is not doing that well on Broadway. And then with the new facelift and the construction on Broadway, we want to help promote business, not decrease business. And hopefully, this will pass and we can give the residents and the business a little boost and a little courtesy for the residents. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I for one will be 100% against this motion. Parking revenue is greatly needed in the city of Revere, without question. Matter of fact, I was going to even put a motion in to request the mayor to have the parking offices work from 5:00 to 8:00 because of all of the illegal trucks within the city that are parked there, and as Counsel Penta indicated, all the illegal taxi cabs in our city. That would bring in much greatly needed money. Now, I for one had a business on Broadway, as you all know, for over 10 years, and the major culprit of the parking on Broadway are the, are business people. We had some stores that, if they had five employees, they all had a parking Broadway, all right? Got a great parking facility down on Sprague Street, you know, the mayor indicated he'd like to really boost that up, a little more police presence, but I mean, the way that you get, as Counsel Corregio indicated, to protect our business people, they have to protect themselves, and I think by virtue of them parking in front of their stores, it hinders their operation. Thank you.
Counselor Gino.
Thank you. With all due respect to Counselor Corregio, as the motion's written right now, I'm definitely opposed to it. The only suggestion that I might make, if it was written, something similar to the city of Boston, if it's just Saturdays during the holiday season, so maybe the month of December, we say, you know, we're not going to give out tickets in commercial areas during the month of December. In terms of just tickets in general on Saturdays, I think in the residential areas, we still need to give them out if people are, you know, parked the wrong way or double parked. So I would ask to amend it to commercial areas during the holiday season, whether it be the last week in November to the first week in January. That way, you're not affecting residential areas, you're helping out the businesses when they're really busy, and you're still getting a lot of income for the city. Other than that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is that a friendly amendment, Madam Vice President?
I'm not sure.
A friendly amendment is that you're making a suggestion to Counselor Corregio to change it? Counselor Corregio, do you have a?
Yes, I would, at least it's something in place. I would go along with the amendment.
Okay. During holiday season. Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to make your motion. Do you have any idea what this could cost the city?
Right now, it's only five hours on a Saturday.
I know, but do you know how many tickets are written? Do you know how many people are putting quarters in? Do you have a value on this? What it could cost the city?
I really don't have an exact amount, but I'm just, I'm just responding to the residents that asked me to bring this forward, and I'm doing it in common courtesy for the residents and the businesses that asked me to. So it's up to the council what you want to do, vote it up or vote it down.
Well, I am definitely opposed to it for one other reason. If I owned a business there, I would want the meter there. I would want, not want someone parked there for eight hours and go off somewhere else or whatever, so you're helping the businesses, it costs a quarter to go in and do some business, so if that, you know, you're actually helping the business with meters out there, unless you put two-hour parking or one-hour parking to move cars along. So, I mean, I cannot vote for this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also oppose this motion. I serve on the Broadway Advisory Committee, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion about what we do with parking when Broadway is completely revitalized. So at best, this motion is premature, but Counselor Haas, who owned a business on Broadway, had the perfect reason why this is not a, you know, a good motion for the businesses. So I would be in opposition to this.
Counselor Riordan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Gino on the point she made about the way the motion is written. Essentially, you're telling the city employees not to do their jobs here. I'm not sure that that's the way we want to go about it. If we want to restrict the use of the meters to some specific time, as Counselor Gino suggested, that's maybe, may be a fine idea, but I think that we ought to amend the parking regulations to reflect that, not tell the city clerk to change the schedule of the meter readers. That doesn't make a lot of, I mean, there's got to be a better way to do it, so that would be my only suggestion.
Ladies and gentlemen, you know, I've told Counselor Corregio that I have mixed feelings on this, but may I say, regarding to Madam Vice President's suggestion about holiday seasons, we already, I'm going to say we, you know, the parking clerk already does that for the holidays. If they are in violation, he gives out a happy holiday fake ticket to let the people know that you're violating, but we're being nice to you at this time of the year, so try not to do it on a regular basis. So I'm tending to vote against this in general. Thank you. Ma'am.
Can I withdraw my amendment?
You may. On the motion, the original motion, all in, roll call.
Roll call on the motion as presented by Counselor Corregio. Counselor Arigo.
No.
No. Counselor Corregio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gino.
No.
No. Counselor Guanasso.
No.
No. Counselor Haas.
No.
No. Counselor Patch.
No.
No. Counselor Penta.
No.
No. Counselor Powers.
No.
No. Counselor Riordan.
No.
No. Counselor Zambudo.
No.
No. And Council President Novoselfsky.
No.
No, the motion is lost in a roll call. There is no further business. Council President.
Late motions on 28?
Counselor Arigo passed, I believe.
Okay, just may I say on 13-044 of Counselor Arigo, on the update of the city stat, on March 11th at 5:00 PM, we'll be calling a committee at the hall, and we'll be getting an update from the mayor's staff on city stat and the facility due.
Excellent.
Next meeting will be March, February 25th, where we have public hearings in two weeks, and just so you know, so you have some advance notice, in March, our meetings will be on March 4th and March 11th. We are off on the 18th for the holiday, the evacuation day, and on the 25th, it is the first night of Passover, so we will have that night off, and we'll go into April after that. So, so you have an advance notice on schedules, hearing no other business.